Okay, we're gonna get started. It's 7:10 PM and I call this meeting of the Board of Trustees of Huffman Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. We will start off with our prayer by Mr. Peer and our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which saints, one nation, under God, indivisible, and every being just as well. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of Texas, on the state of God, one indivisible.
Alright, so first we have public comments. Do we have any public comments? We do not have any public comments. At this time, board members, I would like to move a business and discussion item, Section 5H, to this point in the meeting, if we can go ahead and start with that. That is the discussion item, that is approval of selection of lone finalists for superintendent of schools. I want to say one thing before we make any motions, and then I ask you guys if you would like to say anything, feel free to jump in and say anything. We started this process early summer, I'm not gonna know the exact date, but of going on a search for our next leader of this district and our next superintendent. And I think, I know as an individual board member, and I think as a team, we decided that we wanted to go through a search that was all encompassing and left no stone unturned to make sure that we made the choice that was best for this district going forward. I feel like we accomplished that. First, I want to thank all six of you. We put in a lot of hours the last couple of weeks, but since the summer, we put in a lot of hours. We had over fifty applicants for the position, had two weeks to go through those applications individually, and we called in six people for interviews, six great candidates, they were all great, and then three for follow-up interviews, and spent a lot of time together. I saw you guys a lot and I appreciate it. And I feel like we didn't leave anything on the table, which was my goal anyway, and I just really appreciate that. I appreciate the executive team for being patient with us, the administrative team for being patient with us, the teachers for being patient with us, the parents for being patient. We wanted to do it right, and I feel like we did a great job. So anybody, any other board members want to speak on that?
Hi, Dave.
Okay, go ahead.
So, I would've loved to have been able to just speak out freely, but I didn't want to miss anything. So, I took some notes, and some of the notes that I have, I've turned it into something that's readable for everyone else, because I've jotted a lot of notes down over the course of the last couple of months. This process has required many hours of study, reflection, careful consideration of what our staff desires, what our community values, and most importantly, what our students need. My personal hope throughout this search has been to identify a leader who is deeply invested in Huffman ISD, someone with strong moral character and integrity, who leads by example and is actively involved in the work of the district with no job too small. A superintendent who is willing to answer phones, step in where needed, listen genuinely to all stakeholders, and place students at the center of every decision. I hope to find someone passionate, dedicated, and consistent, a leader who when they do not have an answer will seek it out, learn, and grow, someone who holds themselves and others accountable in a fair and respectful manner, someone who believes in developing our staff, helping them reach their full potential, and he takes ownership of mistakes while working to improve. Above all, I hope to find a superintendent who believes every child in Huffman ISD deserves the very best we can offer, and that every child is capable of achieving their personal best, a leader who sees the tremendous potential of this district and is prepared to put in the work necessary to help us achieve excellence in every area. I feel incredibly confident that we have found that leader.
Thank you.
I agree.
Anybody else have anything?
I can't follow that.
How do you follow that?
Well, in that case, do I have a motion?
I make the motion that the board approves Dr. Angelis Perez as the lone finalist for superintendent of schools.
I have a motion for Ms. Krasik.
I'll second it.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second for Ms. Sullivan. Any comments or...all in favor? All are in favor. Congratulations. Take some pictures. Take some photos.
Board of Trustees, thank you so much for this vote of confidence. I know that back in April, it was an opportunity for us to transition, and I know the leap of faith that y'all had placed in me in taking over, and it's not a responsibility I took lightly. I want to thank you for this opportunity. I would love to thank our executive team and our campus leaders and our district leaders. You all made what could have been a very chaotic time, a very peaceful and positive time, and that's attributed to you guys, and so I appreciate that. I'm not an emotional person. There was a lot of work that went into the last seven months, and we all did the work together, and I think that's the true difference in why we've had the success we've had. I believe with every ounce of my being that we have the best students. This is an amazing district, and I will work tirelessly to make sure that we bring this district back to being the top district that I know it is. I believe in all of our students, I believe in all of our staff, and I just know that we absolutely are going to reach our goals and then some. I wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for my amazing husband and my wonderful boys who have always believed in me. And there's nothing more special than having my mom here. When I was, you know, she's always supported me as, you know, a young mom trying like, "I'm gonna do my doctorate, and I'm gonna do this," and she was always available to support me and my crazy wild dreams. And just, I've had so many people pour into me over my lifetime believing in me and allowing me to be this quirky, crazy person that I am, and I'm so fortunate to have one of my former supervisors here who is here and has supported me every step of the way. My best friends are here, and honestly, y'all, like, I promise, I am going to work tooth and nail, and we are gonna do this together. Brighter days ahead, passion, purpose, possibilities, and those possibilities are endless. Thank you all for the vote of confidence, thank you.
I'll get over here in the middle.
You just send me a photo together.
Do I have a motion?
I make the motion to adopt consent agenda.
I have a motion for Ms. Krasik. Do I have a second?
I second it.
I have a second for Ms. Sullivan. Any questions? All in favor? All are in favor. Next, we'll go to reports to the board. Board President report, great recognition. What can I say about Coach Gilmore that wasn't already said? We're always gonna be entertained by him. Cross-country team has been absolutely amazing for years, and I don't think that's gonna change anytime soon. I'll try to review the board activities for the month, but we've been up here more than I've been home, so we've had, I think, in October and November, seven called meetings and multiple, multiple committee meetings, and like I said, I'm gonna let some of you guys speak on some of the committee meetings that we've had, but just a lot of time. And I want to say this in front of the community, I've only been here for three years, and I've never seen a board that, like, nobody missed anything this last month, and nobody missed anything. Every decision was made with all seven of us there, which is impressive, so thank you guys for that. Anybody want to report on any committee meetings that have happened?
I would love to. We, on the finance committee, we have been meeting quite a bit, at least once a month. I might've got two in before this last meeting. There's a lot happening. It's, our goal is to come up with a balance, but that's our goal. So, they have implemented a budget committee, which we are, which is comprised of the Director of Finance, Technology, and the Purchasing Person. And they're reviewing monthly, weekly, and they're gonna try to get two million off our budget this year, or for the next year. And I look forward, I don't look forward for the cuts, but I look forward for us getting back to balance, but that's our main goal, and that's about it on the finance.
Do I have any other...alright, then we will move on to, still, you're still our interim superintendent right now. Our Chief Officer of Academics and Student Services.
Alright, well, good evening. It has been a very busy last month. Several of you attended the Hargrave High School Theater Program, Game of Tiaras. That was incredible. I laughed the entire time, it was just a joyful event, the students did an amazing job, and we have a new theater teacher this year, Ms. Myers, and you can definitely see the imprint of the impact she's had. It was just an incredible show, and I can't wait to see what the kids do in the future. It was absolutely wonderful, not an empty seat in the room, and I think we're gonna outgrow our venue if she continues to put on such wonderful presentations like she did this one time. We also had our culinary students who catered a Veterans Day luncheon at the May Center, and several of our board members were also in attendance. They did an amazing job catering a Thanksgiving feast, as they always do, and then our JRTC students have been very busy. Not only were they there for that event, they also participated in the Veterans Day Parade, they were invited as guests at Dan Crenshaw's Veterans Day event at the brewery, so they've been all about town and representing our district very well. We also had wonderful Veterans Day programs at both of our elementary campuses, both moving in their own ways, rooms filled to the brim of parents and veterans and being able to honor them for their service. It's truly a special time in Huffman when we celebrate Veterans Day. We know our football season has come to an end. They fought hard and unfortunately didn't come out with the win, but we're really proud of our students and all of our teams, our football, Falconettes, band, they all worked together, made the trek down to Lyndale, and made it back in one piece and safely. You know, they fought hard, and we wish them well and congratulate them on a good season. And with that, we start basketball season, so super excited to see what our students do there. And I wanted to highlight two other pieces of information. Our RDA, our Results Driven Accountability Results, were recently released. These are our federal accountability results, and I'm very proud to say, for the first time in several years, we have not only leveled up, we no longer have to submit any type of plan, no corrective action for special education or our emergent bilinguals, and I look at Ms. Morris and she's super excited. That's just showing the sustainability of some of the work we've been doing. Sometimes it's lagging, it'll, these are gaps that we are closing and that we are hopefully closing permanently, so super excited for that. And then, lastly, we had our Small Business and Realtor Breakfast this last week. Dr. Skinner's vision has come to life yet again. It was a full event, a valuable event, lots of important information, and it's always great to be able to connect with our small businesses and our realtors. We just concluded our survey, so this was the highest participation in our staff survey, our parent survey, and then this is the first time we've broken it out as well for communities. So, we are ready to dig into some of that data. Ms. Bailey will be presenting some of the Priority Two data this evening, with Ms. Fortenberry presenting some of the Community Priority Three data in December, but more importantly, we're gonna be looking at how do we respond to that data in an actionable way, and making sure that by the time we survey again, we are showing results based upon the feedback that we receive and that we value. So, super excited, very, very busy November. I know you all have been very busy, so I want to thank you again for that time that you all have dedicated over the past month. I'm sure your families are excited to have you back on a more regular basis, and looking forward to more celebrations and providing more insight into where we are in December. So, we started this last month, and I'm so excited to keep this going, our academic update, where we're highlighting something that's going on in our classrooms or in our buildings, and several of you may have seen some babies around the district. And so, Ms. Slack is here with us this evening, and Ms. Fortenberry has been working on a highlight for our baby simulation, and so we've got a video for you tonight and some more information from Ms. Slack, but really, really exciting. It was fun to see the kids, their feedback about what it was to have a baby.
Baby's kinda heavy.
He didn't want the baby.
So, before Ms. Slack comes up and answers some questions, so the young lady who said everyone was asking her at the football game, I was one of the "everyone asking her" about it at the football game, and she's like, "I only got 57 minutes of sleep last night." And so, I was like, "Wow," and then I saw different posts, and I was like, "This would be a great idea to look at how the kids reacted," and so once we called them into the room, it was just the floodgates of how traumatic it was to have these kids. And so, but really what was so wonderful about not just the activity was the amount of thought that Ms. Slack puts into it, the daycare, that they have to check the baby in, and she's gonna talk about some of the reports you have in front of you. This was not just carry a baby around, this was, they were graded on how well they took care of their babies, so if you want to share some of that, Ms. Slack?
Yes, so I provided you with one of the sample reports from one of my students during the first simulation. We actually have ten weekends set up for the simulation, so last week was our first one, and then they're sprinkled out throughout the second and third grading period. So, the report that you have in front of you basically shows that this student got the baby at 3:00 PM on Thursday and took care of it until Sunday evening. You can see the care events, so there were 12 times that the baby had to be rocked, she had 100% of those. The baby had 24 diaper change needs, and this student accomplished 79% of them. Burping needed to take place 27 times during that timeframe, and they actually have to put the baby over their shoulder, and it does actually burp. And so that occurred 27 times. There were 40 feeding events, so like the student said, sometimes those feeding events can last anywhere from 15 to 30 minutes, so it's pretty time-consuming. So, for this student, she had an average of 95% of her care she took care of, and then you'll notice that there's also mishandles. So, I get a report with how much time the baby's crying, so if the baby was crying and it couldn't be sued, for this student during that timeframe, it was 42 minutes. And then it also shows any signs of abuse, so shaken baby syndrome was zero, thankfully. As the baby was being passed around, you might have noticed that the head does kind of wobble, so if the head drops back, they do get a percentage off of their grade. It's a 3%, so this student had two mishandles where the head wasn't supported properly. If the baby's laid on its stomach, then they also get points deducted for wrong positioning because it's a newborn, we talk about like sleeping on baby's back and how the baby should be handled, and then rough handling in general. So, this student did really well. And then if you're looking down below, you can see, like, it gives you the exact times that the mishandles occurred, so you can tell, like, a lot of the mishandles were in the evenings or late at night, and that tends to be like when students had that occur more frequently because most of them were rather tired. If you turn it over to the back, even more advanced technology, you'll see that it also gives me a report in regards to the clothing and temperature. So, it senses the temperature and the environment that the baby's in, and it can also sense with the clothing that it has on, if it's dressed appropriately. So, there are different outfits that the baby can put on, or the student can put on, I almost said parent, the student can put on the baby to ensure that it's clothed properly, and it gives a temperature reading. And then down below is where you can see, like, the diaper changes, when they occurred, when the outfits were changed, how long the baby was left in its car seat, which for the simulation, they do sleep in the car seat, so they should be in the car seat more than a normal infant. But it was really interesting because Thursday, when the students got their babies, they brought them back on Friday for daycare mode, and so I went ahead and printed off their report, like, up to that point in time, so they could see how they were doing, and some of them were like, "Oh, my gosh, I've gotta do a better job tomorrow," like, so it was kind of eye-opening to them. And then the parent support group, that was absolutely hilarious, so they had a lot of fun, I've had a lot of fun teaching the class, and they're learning a lot, so it's been a good experience. Any questions?
I think Sam's at home with his baby.
Yeah, Sam? And it's not on right now, Sam. I can program it for you if you'd like to take care of the baby during the rest of the board meeting. Hey, and another one coming, so. Yes, bring them on, bring them on.
She turned it on the other day, and it started like cooing, and then it started like wailing, and I was like, "What is wrong with this baby?"
It's fine when you have all 11 of them going off in the house, same time for the ones.
Thank you, Ms. Slack.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's me again.
It's still you.
All right, for our balanced scorecard, Priority Two, remember that is staff. Ms. Bailey's gonna come and present an update.
Well, I feel like it's an exciting night to get to give you an update on our staff in Priority Two. Back in the spring, when we started redoing our balanced scorecard, and we were looking at how can we change it, how can we simplify it, when it came to staff, we knew we wanted to recruit, retain, and train our staff. And so, that's where we started with our goal, to cultivate high-performing and motivated staff by recruiting talented individuals and embracing professional development and implementing strong retention practices. And so, I'm gonna be presenting some of the data from our survey tonight included in here, but just know that you will get the full report later this week. Our key performance indicators, we looked at what did we want to focus on, what was important to us. We knew safety, high-performing staff, teacher incentive allotment, which a lot of times you'll hear referred to as TIA, mental health training for staff, which is also part of House Bill 3, teacher retention, and then decreased teacher absenteeism. That was something that was previously on our balanced scorecard, and we wanted to continue to improve it. So, our first one is safety, and so last year, our baseline was 83% of our staff felt safe on our campuses. This year, you will see that 95% of our staff reported that they felt safe on campuses, so we exceeded our goal already, and we want to continue to improve on that. Just know we're gonna give it again in the spring, and it could look different, it could be less, it could be more, we will see. Next is high-performing staff, and this is gonna be based off of MAP data. We just gave the beginning of the year assessment, and we will give the middle of the year assessment. This was something This was something that we previously did not give last year. So we do not have data for this right now, but we will have it next time we present on BSC two. Priority two. Teacher incentive allotment. So currently sixty-one percent of our staff is eligible for TIA. And we're working with our DEIC to expand on that. And you'll see when you get the survey data, one of the questions was, um, does TIA accurately reflect teacher effectiveness? And that was the lowest at sixty percent. But as you can see, only sixty-one percent of our staff is eligible for it. So it directly correlated. So I was like, okay, good. Like, that was a good data point. Mental health training for staff. This is part of House Bill Three. Again, by twenty-eight, twenty-nine, we have to have a hundred percent of our staff trained. We have well over fifty percent of our staff already trained and our goal was twenty-five percent this year. So I'm very proud of everyone who has completed their online trainings. Next, teacher retention. So obviously we look at this number at the end of the year, the number of staff that's returning. Currently, we've lost one teacher. Um, sorry, I guess I need to move my slide. So we're at ninety-nine percent retention right now. Um, our goal is eighty-nine percent and, um, by twenty-eight, twenty-nine, we're looking at ninety percent. We don't always, a hundred percent retention is not even, um, possible. Sometimes it's time for people to grow out the door. We know life happens and things change. So just know, um, that we're looking to aim to that eighty-nine, ninety percent. I believe the state average last year was eighty-seven percent. So we're above that. Teacher absenteeism. So last year, twenty-seven percent of our teachers had ten or more absences. And this does not include like professional development, FMLA or school business. This is just personal illness or personal business. Currently, we're sitting at one point five percent of our staff has already exceeded the ten absences. Um, obviously it's still early in the year, so we'll look at this again at the end of the year. But I feel like we will hit our mark. And then overall, ninety-three percent of our staff completed the survey, which I think is huge. Um, we were super excited. There was a little incentive for campuses and departments to do it. So a little friendly competition. And one of the questions was, would you refer someone to work in Huffman ISD? And ninety-one percent said yes. So I feel like we are moving in the right direction. So, thank you all. Do you have any questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, so in your board packets, you've got the very early drafts of our three calendars for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. Um, I want to make sure I note that the template looks different on purpose. Um, last year we had some of our drafts make its way out and people confuse them with actual calendar. So, um, what you have in front of you are options A, B and C. The three options were based on feedback and they were, um, designed with our DEIC. The three options include, one option being we liked the late start. So they want to keep the late start. Teachers don't want to come back until after August first. So one of those options includes a later start like this year. We've got another option that has an early end where we end before Memorial Day. Our students go on Memorial Day weekend and do not return. And then we've got, um, one that addresses a big pain point this year where we have a full break for October, but a partial week for February. So the three options are reflective of those three priorities. What we're doing now is we will clean these up, Huffmanize them and put them out for the staff and community to vote. We're hoping to put that out when we return from Thanksgiving break and bring the, uh, calendar for approval at the December board meeting. Any questions? All right, I'm on to my last item. All right, so elementary took their DLA. That is our district learning assessment. Um, we, you know, we are implementing MAP. And so, uh, we want to avoid overtesting our kids. And so the DLAs have been shortened. Um, they are directly aligned with what's been taught to kind of get a check of where our students are with the content that's been delivered. So up until now, we have taken the elementary DLAs for reading, math and science. And so you have that data in front of you. And, um, starting next week, we will start with the secondary. And so for reading, language arts, um, we're off to a great start. We're at seventy-six, seventy-three and eighty-five percent approaches for reading, language arts. Our meets are forty-four, forty-one. Um, fifth grade is pretty high at meets. Um, it was a smaller, um, assessment, so definitely need to dig into there. We, we like that number, um, but we want to make sure that as students are developing stamina and reading across multiple passages, that they can keep that mastery there. Um, mathematics, um, that's continuing to kind of be one of our pain points. Uh, I did speak with Ms. Dorsey, uh, earlier today and she has already begun some of that data digging with the campus teams to really understand where the misconceptions are and, um, where we need to, um, address more of a rigor standpoint. And so, um, as we work with our academic subcommittee, we need to spend some time in the math classes and kind of seeing our curriculum and, and drawing the bridge between what we're, what we're presenting to our students. And then how are we giving them the opportunity to apply that in mathematical, um, problem solving? I was excited to see, um, the, the science DLA data. Um, we have, uh, you know, this is a new curriculum. We're on year two of implementing the science curriculum. And, um, seeing, uh, compared to where we were last year at DLA one, um, we have, um, made some gains, but definitely not where we want to be. But a, a good start to the year. I think, uh, coming in January, looking at MAP and really triangulating our DLA data, our, what we're seeing in our classrooms, exit ticket data, and then looking at MAP, not only at achievement, but at growth and, and determining where we're at there. That's the elementary DLA one. It was no, it was designed to be no more than a class period. So it's not a full blown assessment. We'll be doing more interim type assessments like this instead of shutdowns and, um, taking too much instructional time for assessment purposes. Um, that'll be the next MAP. Um, yeah. And then our kind of what we would call our mock star, that'll be in February to March to kind of really get a, a rehearsal. Um, so we're trying to eliminate, we used to do kind of shutdowns for DLAs and take multiple, too much time. And then you run the risk of, yeah, you're testing, but when are you teaching? So, um, the DLAs were shortened, but we'll have a, a more like robust picture of where kids are in January. Yes. All right.
Chief, Chief Operations Officer.
All right, just going through operations report. Uh, Dr. Perez mentioned our realtor and small business owner breakfast. So thank you, Mr. Dagley, for speaking at that. I'd like to thank, uh, Huffman Fire and EMS for being present to speak to our attendees. And also Commissioner Ramsey's office, uh, for sending someone out to give us an update from the county. So, uh, good success. It's always a good time, as Dr. Perez mentioned, to get to, uh, to listen to those guys and, and learn from them, but also hear all the changes on the landscape of developments out there. So we learned of several new things that are, that will be putting on our radar as far as growth concerns. So, uh, also since our last meeting, we had our construction groundbreaking ceremony for the high school job. That was, uh, that Wednesday after our last board meeting. Um, and so thank you, um, all of you guys that were able to make it. That was a great celebration day. Um, we had that bad rain come in that night before and, but it cleaned up nicely. And so just like to thank, uh, the board members who were present, also our community members. It was a great time. Uh, moving down the list, uh, we have Dr. LaFuentes and some of her staff and I went to Meteor Furniture showroom to start looking at furniture for the middle school. So that's exciting. Looking at furniture always kind of makes it feel more real, you know, and, uh, getting to try out furniture. And Dr. LaFuentes had a good time with that. Um, our maintenance guys are, are just steadily working. Um, a lot of our operations staff will be here next week working while a lot of us are, have our feet kicked up. And so they'll be taking a lot of different projects. Um, our child nutrition is in the heat of our Thanksgiving feast season today. We started our elementaries, so let me back up. So last week was high school, middle school, uh, which are much less, you know, especially if I'm a middle school kid. My son didn't want, you know, any parent up there for middle school lunches. Uh, but our elementaries are a much bigger thing. And so today, uh, we started at Falcon Ridge. We served about seven hundred and fifty Thanksgiving meals just today. So, um, Falcon Ridge will end up tomorrow and HES is Tuesday and Wednesday of this week. So, um, we did have at Falcon Ridge today, we had assistant principals, counselors, um, all kinds of people in there, uh, working our, our lines, helping serve food. Uh, Mr. Russo, our retired child nutrition director was there helping also. So, um, those are always fun. Simone does a great job of bringing, bringing everybody together to make sure that we're, we're getting through. And, um, and it's quick. You know, you, you get in and get out and, uh, it's a great time for families. So, um, as we move on, uh, a couple of things, transportation. We, um, have some drivers in training again, um, trying to get them caught up, ready to take on some routes. Uh, we did make a decision to bring in, um, an outside consultant to help us look at some of our overall bus repairs. We don't have, you, you guys are very aware of our facilities as far as our mechanics go. And so trying to get those buses in there and, and assess is difficult. And so we brought in someone to help us do that so we can prioritize that. Uh, thankfully about eighty percent of those can be repaired in-house. Um, and so that helped us expedite those repairs and timelines. Um, Ms. Bailey has done a great job, um, getting those, those buses moving for us. So any questions related to our operations report? All right, we'll move on to our bond report. Uh, want to, we're going to have a quick video. This is the video that we played for our realtors, our realtor breakfast. This was, uh, taken, uh, Tuesday of last week. We were going to update it, but not a lot's changed since then, um, that you'd be able to tell from a drone flight. And so, uh, for our December meeting, we'll be seeing a lot of changes because we're going to be pouring some concrete this week. And, uh, a lot of things will be happening this week. So, Ms. Davis, you want to go ahead? So this was for our, our realtors. So we kind of reminded them and talked about what we're, what we're going to be looking at. So our Ag Pavilion Extension that we'll be adding, uh, concrete under that pavilion extension, uh, and our new CTE center. So this is back, this is the Ag building that you see on the right-hand side. Um, so directly behind there, we will have an extension onto that barn, uh, that will have concrete under that. We'll have a concrete driveway. The Caliche is gone. Um, Mr. Duke appreciates all the potholes, like getting cleaned up for him. Uh, the back CTE building, our peers are done. Uh, we are working on gray beams, uh, underground. Uh, plumbing is going in. Uh, we'll have a parking lot up in the front and some of our driveways will be poured Wednesday, I believe it is, at three A.M. Because concrete guys like to get up early, right, Mr. Warren? So this is our CTE building. Kind of start seeing things coming together a little bit. The underground plumbing is just incredible. Just, it's like a whole little village out there, everybody working. Uh, just kind of reminder what the front of that, uh, building will look like. Couple of different, different images there. Uh, our realtors, we're all excited about seeing the pictures and, and getting to see what's, what's coming for our community. Uh, here will be our gym. So we're kind of flying over our softball, headed to baseball on the left side. Uh, this will be a gym attached to our current gym. Top right picture is cafeteria of the high school. Um, and this is kind of what it'll look like. This is going to look like it's kind of been there. It's going to match what's on the front of our building. And then last but not least is our middle school. Dishes are renovations. We have now, since this was done, our gray beams have been poured. We have some walls going to be poured Wednesday also. Wednesday's a big day for us. Uh, we have gray beams that were going around towards the right and then back on the back wall. Currently not dug in this picture, but have been dug out and rebar is being put in place. Um, so it's, it's kind of all starting to come together a little bit. Um, soon, once we get a little bit more in place, you'll really be able to, to see it all come together. So there's a little bit left. Uh, oh, and that's the, that's the front, just as a reminder of what it'll look like. So as this finish plays, it plays out, I don't know, some of you have not seen the patio. This is kind of the idea of the patio back behind the middle school, um, in that kind of grassy area. It's a wasted space right now. Um, it's kind of the design, Dr. LaFuentes is still working on some color selections, but that'll be a nice place for our students. So overall, things are moving well for us, moving on time. We've had great weather. Uh, the end of this week doesn't look, uh, too promising, but we'll see how that plays out. And so, um, as we go through, uh, I've given you kind of our contingency amounts. Both of our contingencies are looking good. Um, our MEP at HES project, we have had our kickoff for that. Uh, we've spent two days now walking that campus with engineers, architects, doing assessment of that building. Our operations center, we are seeing some positive movement on the FEMA side for our FEMA portion of that project. Uh, we expect hopefully within the next two months to have, have a somewhat official approval. Um, and so we have kicked off, um, that project also would be RW, who is here tonight, uh, for a different project. Uh, but we are, um, we're starting our planning meetings and programming and all of those things to be prepared for that. And then to wrap it up, our community construction oversight committee, we met, um, for our October meeting was on the twenty-eighth of October. We met in the D1 construction trailer. Uh, several of you guys were in attendance, I appreciate that. We welcome some of our new team members onto that. And we had, um, Division One there to answer any questions that anybody had, kind of talk through that project. Our next meeting is actually tomorrow night. Uh, we're going to meet at the Ag building tomorrow night. We're going to focus more on a little bit of budget stuff and then kind of more processes since we brought new team members on. Um, we use a lot of acronyms and some things that our current team has already learned. Um, and so we're going to talk about how, how we kind of get through the system and move things, um, RFIs and CPRs and all the, the fun, different things that we talk about on daily basis that Division One talked about at our last meeting, but some of our new team didn't quite understand some of it, just because they haven't been exposed to it. So, any questions on the bond? Son?
Uh, what was the total number of, uh, committee members now in that oversight committee?
Oh, um.
Had a full room.
Yeah, yeah, we probably, the trailer was small. So we had, um, I think the position's about twelve.
Sorry.
Yeah. I think twelve, thirteen, something like that.
Awesome.
Yeah. It's, uh, the, the new guys that joined us, uh, did great, had great questions. Um, I think we had some good conversation overall. Um, their questions is what reminded me we needed to come back and have kind of a process and kind of talk about what some of these things are. Um, what, what's been so fortunate for this committee, and some of our board members have, have made several of them, is just being able to talk about those processes and, and explaining how everything gets through. And it's not just me sitting here and making decisions. We have a whole team of people overseeing this and, uh, doing, doing construction walks with different teams of, you know, the engineers walk it, the construction guys walk it, all these different people in place. So, um, so it was a good, good, good group of people and, uh, had some good solid conversations, so. Yep. Yes, ma'am. Uh, the last item I have is this information item. Um, Israelia to Terricon, this is our testing, uh, company. So when, uh, in, in order to, so Terricon is who does our testing for our soil. We'll test our concrete, uh, we'll test our steel, um, all, all different things. Um, and so when we came to you guys back, um, in May, I think it was, um, we did an amount not to exceed. We wanted, we felt like that was the best way to be transparent and say like, this is our cutoff. This is what it is. That was based off of the proposal that Terricon gave us. Um, at the time, what we, what we didn't have in place, because, uh, we haven't gotten to that point, was a system for whenever our, um, contractors, when they fail a test, the retest after that becomes responsibility to the contractor. Because they, they didn't meet it. And so we pay for the first failed test, the, the subsequent test. Retesting after that then comes on the contractor. When working with Terricon and trying to balance this out, we, we always expect something's going to fail at some point. We know our middle school, we had some soil problems that had a lot of failures that we had to work through. Um, and so in working with Terricon, their contract is directly with us, the district. They have no contract with our construction guys, right? And so they can't invoice our construction companies. And so what we are looking at is typically how we've seen some other districts, where we've gotten some advice from is what they do is, um, we, we, we need to ask for additional money because we're going to be billed for those failures. The way we recoup that cost from our contractors is through the form of a contingency credit. Um, and to be, because they can't send those invoices to the other contractor. So, um, so if, let's say it's two thousand dollars that, that Division One owes, we have to initially pay that two thousand. Then, then that two thousand comes back to the district in the form of a CPR, a change order on our project through our contingency. So our contingency goes up by two thousand. So we're going to work on numbers and making sure we're final. Um, we also know we had that gray bean problem at the middle school where we had water coming in and that was some unforeseen circumstances. There's always going to be those things. Uh, hindsight, we should have put a little bit of contingency into this when we came to you guys. Um, but we didn't, we didn't know that at the time or, or think about that of being the way we were going to, you know, to be the best way to handle that. So that's kind of where we are with that. So, uh, be happy to answer any questions or, uh, I'll be putting more information in the Friday reports just to kind of keep you guys up to date with numbers. Good? All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening. Um, so starting off tonight, we have our monthly and year-to-date report of tax revenues. And following that, there are a few other, uh, financial reports. And we are looking at doing something a little different moving forward. Um, we would like to start posting these out on the website for transparency purposes. And they're not out there yet, but I have printed off, um, some for, for anyone, um, attending our board meeting, um, tonight, if they would like to review it. Um, and we're going to combine those into one financial report for you guys each month. And with that, I wanted to ask, now that you've had a chance to look at it, if you have any questions about any of those reports? Okay, then. Moving forward, um, to, um... Okay, then, moving forward to my next item, I have Mike Darlow here tonight with Purdue, Brandon Felder, Collins and Mott. He is our delinquent tax attorney and he is going to be reviewing our semi-annual status.
Fantastic.
Okay.
Congratulations. Board members, good to see everybody, appreciate the opportunity to visit with you. Want to introduce Renee Sanchez, where are you Renee? He's a new lawyer with the firm, he just got licensed three weeks ago, started with us. He's gonna get the privilege of working with me and Leslie Scotty on your account. So figured nothing better than coming to a board meeting and getting to see what, see what happens. Either keep him here or run him off, we'll see what it does. Just a couple of items that I'll point out for you. And I, since I was here last, there's been some new board members, so let me just introduce myself, Mike Darlow with the firm. I've had the privilege of representing the district since I was a baby lawyer in 1983. So I've been around, seen a few things, had the privilege of working with the district and see it grow over the years. We play a small role in your financial picture. For those people that are not able to pay their delinquent taxes, we come on board and try to collect it. The district does not pay us for our services, they're paid strictly by the delinquent taxpayer. And we work very closely with the district in terms of policy and how they want us to go about collecting taxes. And we work closely with the delinquent taxpayers to try to find solutions to the situation they find themselves in. By and large, we're able to collect the bulk of our money without having to file lawsuits or put property up for sale, but that does occur. And if that's necessary, we know what to do to bring that to fruition and to get the money into the district. What we provide to you every six months is a bit of a collection report to give you a sense of what's going on, answer any questions that you may have. In the interim of these reports, Ginger and I are communicating on various issues that come up from time to time involving delinquent taxes, property, sundry-related, property-related issues to provide the assistance that we can for the district. So what I have for you tonight just gives you a snapshot of the delinquent tax roll. This we did, you know, with the new laws on when you have to get things in for agendas and everything, this information may seem a little dated. We just prepared it a couple of weeks ago to have it for tonight. You had $1.4 million of base tax owed for all tax years up through and including 2024. Your 25 bills will be going out. If they haven't gone out already, by the Goose Creek Tax Office that collects your taxes, those will get mailed out soon for 2025. So I've got all the years before that. And what we do is we break the roll down into categories. It helps us work through what's owed, make sure that our staff is prioritized and trying to put our best efforts forward to collect as much as we can as quickly as we can. So just a couple of categories I'll point out for you. Our action pending, thirty-two percent of the roll, these are accounts that going back in July when the 2024 taxes were turned over to us, we've sent letters to, we're making phone calls to, we're trying to have commitments for payment. Multiple ways to try to get people to pay, and if that doesn't work, we have to file lawsuits. You can see thirty percent of the roll is in litigation. And those are in various categories of litigation from, we recently filed a lawsuit, the people that have been served and then call us about how they can pay their taxes, the people that are scheduled to go to court to have a judgment taken against them for the taxes that they owe, and then eventually properties that we have to put up for sale. If you've not yet had the opportunity to go to our website and sign up to get updated information on tax sales, I invite you to go to pbfcm.com/taxsales. Sign up, it's free, we'll send you a blast every Friday about tax sales in Harris County and other places that we happen to have tax sales. And I point that out to let you know, over the last few months, we've had a few properties that have actually had to go to tax sale. We were able to sell those at the courthouse steps. The people that lost that property will have the right to redeem the property either in six months, if it's not their homestead, or two years if it is. If it's sold for more than what was owed, they have the right to make a claim to that money. So this is what happens at the end of this whole process that I've mentioned earlier. I'll also point out two other really quick ones, so I keep moving here. Deferrals. If you're over sixty-five and it's your homestead or you have a disability, you have the right under the law to have the taxes frozen, if you will, not paid, unless you voluntarily wanna pay them. It puts us on the sideline, we can't take any aggressive action to collect the tax. You'll note that in the last election, a couple of weeks ago, the homestead exemption got up to $140,000. You have a hold harmless with the state, they're supposed to reimburse you, however they define that in due time of what that's gonna look like dollar-wise. And if you also have a deferral, they, I mean, over sixty-five, they increase that exemption amount to $60,000. So you'll have some accounts that no longer will have a tax bill, because the exemptions will eliminate that. This is probably as good a place as any to mention the other item that was on the constitutional amendment that passed that's gonna have an impact on the district. Where's Ginger? We don't know how much it is yet. Hopefully the appraisal district will provide us some guidance. But you will note that business personal property, which until now had an exemption of $2,500, will go up beginning with the 2026 year to $125,000. So the first $125,000 that any business has in inventory, equipment, those type of things that they use for the production of income for their business, will be exempt from taxation. So when you drive up and down the road and you look at the local businesses, many of them right now are paying you a personal property tax, ad valorem tax, it's all the same concept. They will not, beginning in 2026. So 2025, everything's the same. Twenty-six will be a difference, there is no hold harmless, and it impacts every taxing entity in the state. How many accounts that represents in Huffman and what the potential value reduction, again, we don't know that yet. But I would imagine that the appraisal district will be getting calls from many districts around the county and around the state to know what the impact of that is. So let me move on, I'll skip the second because I talked too much on the first one. So of the years that are owed, how is it broken down? The largest single category is 2024, which I mentioned earlier, we picked up back in July 1. Twenty-three, you can see it represents fourteen percent of the total, and then each year prior to that. The importance of this slide is to show you that the newer the delinquency, the more collectible. Delaying and trying to collect the taxes doesn't really do the property owner any good, and it doesn't do the district any good either, because you need your money sooner than later. And then I've provided you with collection statistics going back to 2020. I can go through any of these, but let me just take you up to the last year that ended. So July 1 of 2024, we returned over $893,000. And each year y'all are collecting roughly ninety-five, ninety-six percent of your current levy. So we're dealing with the last four to five percent. So for the twenty-three year, when that first year cycle ended on June 30th of 2025, we collected a little over seventy-two percent of that $893,000. And then through October this year, we're up over seventy-six percent. And for the year we began back in July, you'll see that the turnover went up a little bit to $996,000. And in the first few months, we've collected just shy of forty percent of that. So we're on target for another good, strong collection cycle. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have on this or anything else that we're doing on behalf of the district. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. So we'll move on to business and discussion items. You have a motion?
I make a motion that the board accept report as presented by Mazin Associates, P.L., Elsie, for the approval of financial audit for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025.
I have a motion for Ms. Krassik, do I have a second?
I second it.
Second for Ms. Sullivan?
Good evening again. So Mr. Albert Garcia is here from Mazin Associates and he is going to discuss the results of our financial audit, which are printed off, and they are in front of you.
Good evening, congratulations, and you know, you got the auditor following the lawyer and, you know, I'll try to keep this short, okay? All right, usually the auditor, the report sends everybody out, but I'll try to keep this short. All right, we did the audit for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2025. And we're gonna, pages five and seven is our opinion, we're gonna be issuing a, an unmodified report, which is basically a clean report. That's what a good set of financial statements for any kind of entity would like to receive. I will kinda add this, we had a good discussion last Thursday. Dr. Perez, you know, she was digging into the numbers and, you know, had some good questions. We had a really good conversation, you know, kinda throughout. One of the topics was, when we typically issue a report, there's several reports. There's the financial statement report, there's a couple of letters, and there's a single audit report, okay? And because of the government shutdown, we can't issue the single audit report right now. We're kind of in, we're in limbo right now. And so this is a two-part presentation or approval. So we're talking about the financial statements right now, and then we'll come back with another report to kinda talk about the single audit and the federal part of it. But right now, the financial statements are looking good. We can actually look to pages eighteen and nineteen, and the general fund is reporting a fund balance of $7.2 million, okay? That is an increase of 1.9 million over the year, but part of that was the maintenance tax note that was issued, okay? But if you look at the 7.2, we kinda talked about this, it's kind of, that's the district savings account, okay? And it represents about eighteen percent of the general fund expenditures. That's about sixty-six days of activity. The district has a policy of ninety or to get there. And so something to kinda shoot forward as you move forward. The debt service fund has about 3.3 million. Y'all were talking about the bond projects right now, or at the end of June is about 39 million. We're expecting that to decrease as projects continue. And I believe in '26, it'll have an increase with the recent bond issue, okay, about $45 million. The special revenue fund has about $1.2 million, and most of that is tied in with the campus activity and student activity funds. Sorry, campus activity and child nutrition program. But overall, the district's financial statements are looking good. On page fifty-nine is the general fund budget. Y'all adopted a $2.9 million deficit, and through amendments, it increased to about 181 surplus, but that's after that maintenance tax note. But the actual was a $1.9 million increase. You did really good on the, actual revenues are about $661,000, what you estimated. And your expenditures were about a million dollars below what you were anticipating. So good revenue, less expense. You did really well against the amended budget. So we are not reporting any material weaknesses in regards to the financial reporting. And, you know, I like to give a shout out to Ginger and her department for, you know, I always kinda like to add, they also assist us while they're doing their day-to-day. And so they've done a really good job this year. And with that, I'll be happy to take any questions.
Any questions?
Right, and what I've always said is, there's always a little housekeeping to do, but there's no red flags in as far as the numbers and the report itself. We kinda talked about Ginger has some housekeeping items to kinda take up, but, you know, no red flags to draw any attention to.
Elsie, I also appreciate you answering the question.
And I would like to point out, it was some of the new board members were at the subcommittee. I think they usually get attached to the audit committee early on, so.
It's definitely a good place to be and to learn. And I know I was on there last year with a couple of other board members, and I asked a lot of questions last year. And so just how the process works, and you do a good job of explaining it to us in that committee, and we appreciate that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, so we have a motion, so any other questions or anything? All in favor? All are in favor?
I make a motion that the board approve budget amendment number three as presented.
I have a motion for Ms. Krassik, do I have a second?
I second it.
Second for Ms. Sullivan?
Hey there, okay, so this is for budget amendment three for the year. It is on our general fund, and it is a functional transfer of expenditures from instruction to security and monitoring after projecting out for the year for some extra duty and extra job officers.
Any questions? All in favor? All are in favor?
I make the motion to allow the superintendent to enter into a contract with Engineered Air Balance for the testing and balancing of the HHS and HMS bond construction projects in an amount not to exceed $206,000.
I have a motion for Ms. Krassik, do I have a second?
I second it.
Second for Ms. Sullivan?
So this is for our testing and balancing. So essentially, this company will come in and make sure all of our settings are right. It's going to take a look at each component, our fans pumps, those kind of things, make sure that we are operating correctly and that more importantly meets the performance criteria, meets the spec for what it should be doing. Balancing is making sure that our air and water flows are all adjusted appropriately to make sure that our classrooms and that we have uniform temperatures across, that we don't have too, air pressures and all of that. So it's checking, doing our testing on those systems. So we did interview four firms, essentially it's kind of more like eight interviews, because some of the firms will do testing and balancing and then also commissioning, which is what we're gonna talk about here in just a second. And so we kinda brought them in together, both sides of their firms, so that we can talk to them and better understand them. So we spent a lot of time on this, this is what we delayed by until this board meeting. We weren't gonna vote on it at the last board meeting, but I needed some more time to make sure we did our due diligence and homework to make sure we were making the best choice for our district. So we feel like Engineered Air Balance, EAB, will be the best choice for us for our balancing, testing and balancing.
Any questions? All in favor? All are in favor?
I make the motion to allow the superintendent to enter in a contract with TAV Technologies for the commissioning of the HHS and HMS bond construction projects in an amount not to exceed $137,985.
I have a motion for Ms. Krassik, do I have a second?
I second it.
Second for Ms. Sullivan?
So towards the end of construction completion, we have our commissioning. And so that's where they come in and basically make sure that all of our systems work like they're supposed to. That could be lighting, security, fire alarms, HVAC, make sure that everything's working with our BAS system, our energy management system. And so basically to ensure that the testing and balancing is all, everything's set right like it's supposed to be per spec, and then all of our systems within the building are working appropriately to make sure that our students and staff are comfortable in a safe environment. I will add, and I should've added on this last one, we did add a two percent contingency onto both of these, because we know there will be some slight, we'll have to need them out for an additional testing or something like that. And so two percent's pretty minimal on these. But after talking to our engineers, they felt like that that would be a good, safe number, didn't hope that we don't even really need that, but we did build that in this time for these, so.
Any questions? All in favor? All are in favor?
I make a motion to allow the superintendent to enter into a contract with Greenscape Six for the free pond-to-purpose project for an amount not to exceed $250,000.
I have a motion for Ms. Krassik, do I have a second?
I second it.
Second for Ms. Sullivan?
All right, so I have my guest speaker here who can speak to this project much better than I can. And so I'm gonna have Zach kinda give us a reminder of what this project is, and then we'll talk a little bit about it after he's done.
All right. There it is, okay. Well, thanks for having me again. I'm back to give you a little update on the project and kinda where we're at. And so just as a quick little reminder of, you know, the Ford Scholar Program and how we got here. I am one of ten Texas FA Four Leadership Scholars. So they pick ten every year to come into our communities and create substantial and sustainable service projects, all while trying to further advance our leadership. service projects, all while trying to further advance our leadership skills. And so by being a scholar, of course, I had to select this project. We went through a six-week community needs assessment period where I met with and interviewed a lot of different people from our community with, you know, a bunch of different backgrounds, all to kind of see what's going on and how I can come in and help. Through those conversations, it became pretty apparent that mental health was something that was on the top of everyone's mind. It came up in almost every meeting I had. And so with this project, I feel like, you know, we can certainly help accomplish that goal of, you know, helping connect people with resources and just spreading some awareness around it. So as far as the timeline, we are still on track for a spring 2026 completion, looking somewhere in April. This is really critical for my timeline as a scholar because I'm only given until May 1st to complete our project. So we should be wrapping up sometime in April, which gives us some time to do some, you know, community things, ribbon cutting, things like that. This is a colorized drawing, I guess, of the project that was provided by BRW. Just to remind you, BRW completely donated their services pro bono for this project, so we're super grateful for that. I think this project, I mean, this picture kind of gives a much better idea of the actual scope of this, and you can actually see the trails and the boardwalks and all that actually painted out and see how much, you know, hopefully, we're going to change up this and make it look super nice. So funding, this is always super fun to talk about. So as we know, this is kind of going through the Texas Parks and Wildlife Grant that the district has had for a while now. Super happy to report that in terms of grant requirements, they require 50% sponsor match, which can be made up of both in-kind and cash donations. In terms of that, we are 100% funded, so BRW's donation of their services, along with the money that I've raised so far, completely covers that. Along with construction costs, we are funded there. Originally, I had set a goal for myself just to raise $50,000 in solid cash that can be spent. Out of that, we're 62% of the way there with $31,000 raised. Anything more at this point goes straight back into the project, into the students, incorporating some of those extra things. We've talked about story walk, things like that. So, yeah. So currently, we are kind of getting ready to get rolling, get moved into the groundbreaking portion, start the construction timeline. We're still working on kind of getting everything finalized as far as construction, but currently, we're looking at a tentative groundbreak ceremony date of December 10th. As soon as that's finalized, you know, we'll send that out and post it out. Aside from that, you know, like I mentioned, I'm still looking for those donations, always, always looking for those. And when it comes to donations, literally, anything helps. I have benefits starting at $50, going all the way through $10,000. So I've really realized over the last couple of weeks that those $50 donations add up super quickly, and they help big time. So, yeah, I think next is just a quick video if it'll play. If there's no questions, then I'll kind of turn it back over to Dr. Skinner, so.
So I would, thank you, Zach. I would like to point out, Mr. Jeff Choice with BRW and Preston Baird next to him are architects on this project. And again, like Zach said, they are doing this pro bono for Zach. I introduced Zach and Jeff, and they hit it off instantly, and Jeff was all over it, and Preston is leading this project and is doing a phenomenal job. So thank you to those guys, and thank you for being here tonight. That is a direct $25,000 contribution to Zach's, Zach's efforts there. So the thing I would tell you, so Greenscape Six is the contractor we are recommending, that BRW and I are. You do have our scoring matrix in the back. We, although this is through Zach's project, we still have to follow our procurement procedures. And so we did accept three proposals, and so we scored those, and so Greenscape Six is who will select. We are going to have to decline the alternate one bid. That was for an additional piece of trail that came back over budget for us, and so we're going to decline that and go, their, their base proposal is the $225,000. I do want to clarify that we did, we are asking $250,000, and I want to explain why. So base proposal's $225,000, but as Zach continues to raise money, we already know he's at $31,000, as we go through this project and he continues to raise money, we want the ability to enhance that project, which will most likely be through the source of our contractor. And so $250 is kind of his cap, and so we don't want to have to, if we, we have to come back to the board, it's going to delay the project, and so we didn't want to do that. And so we want to go ahead and just get it to that level there with the understanding that the district's not to incur any cost. This would all be directly related to Zach's fundraising effort. So we believe he's going to get, bring more money in, and he's doing such a great job, and so we don't want to limit his possibilities because we had a cap at that $225 mark to just set that base proposal. So any questions about that that I can answer, or Zach can answer?
I'd like, I'd like to say, thank you, Zach, for committing so much time and effort for a young man. You make us proud to be here. Not only that, but I wanted to thank BRW for spending up and donating their time and efforts for this project, and all of our donors. Makes us proud to be in this city.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And thank you so much for being here. And I know your parents are awful, because I'm proud of you. As long as I live, you'll know your parents.
I want to thank Dr. Skinner because he's shown Zach the ropes. Like, the other day, I had to miss the unsealing, and Zach was like, I don't know if I can tell you. I'm like, you can tell me! Like, sticking to the whole process. What a learning experience, and like, it's just, you're going to be all the more ready for whatever's next in your future.
I think Zach is learners a lot more to it than just going to find someone to build a trail. But I'll, I'll give him credit. I mean, he, we're scheduling meetings around his work schedule, and, and he's made every one of them. He's there participating with our architects. He's been on calls with attorneys. He's, he's done all of that and been a part of that process. And so, super, super proud of him and look forward to getting this project started.
I just wanted to add or ask if one wanted to donate, they go to pondtopurpose.com to contribute.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that is the best way to go through it. There are signs out in the lobby with QR codes on them. So all donations are going through the Education Foundation, you know, for their 501(c)(3) status and all that. So those QR codes will take you directly to their donation page. But yes, pondtopurpose.com, you can find a bunch of information there about the project donations, and then there's also a form, like, if you want to pay by check, just send me a form through there, and I'll, I'll come get it for you whenever you want me to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor? All are in favor?
I recommend that the board accept the Huffman Education Foundation grant award of $28,075 designated for the Falcon Ridge Elementary Pond to Purpose Project.
I have a motion for Ms. Karasik. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second for Ms. Sullivan.
Okay, so this is just a phenomenal project, and I'm so happy to also be involved with it. And we have Ms. Wolf here tonight as well. So Zach has mentioned that he has raised $31,000 to date, but as of October 31st, that amount was $28,075. So we wanted to go ahead and do an interim, bring that to the board for acceptance, to not only celebrate Zach and the foundation and what they're able to do to help raise this money, but also that helps kickstart some of the funding for this project. And just so you know, all of these funds, including the grant, funds will go into their own separate account, and we'll be able to follow all of that through that account. So is there anything you want to add?
Well, we were very proud of Zach, as I know everyone in this room is, and very grateful that we were able to assist in any way, and we just look forward to seeing your project come to fruition. So congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank you all.
Thank you.
Any questions? All in favor? All right, all are in favor. Any others? All right. All right. So if there's no other motions, this board will now adjourn into closed session pursuant to the following sections of the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Section 551-071, 072, 073, 074, 075, 076, 082, 083, and 084. It's now 9:35, and we're going to reconvene into open from closed. We have some motions from closed. I make the motion that we, that I, I make the motion to nominate Leila Karasik for Board President.
I'll second it.
Ms. Sullivan seconds. Any discussions or comment? All in favor? All are in favor? All right. Any other motions?
Yes, sir. I make the motion that we nominate Sam Peer for Board Vice President.
I have a motion for Ms. Karasik. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second for Ms. Sullivan? Any discussion? All in favor? All are in favor?
I make the motion that we nominate Patrick Terry for Board Secretary.
I have a motion for Ms. Karasik. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second for Ms. Sullivan? Any discussion? All in favor? All are in favor?
I make the motion that we nominate Julie Sullivan for Board Assistant Secretary.
I have a motion for Ms. Karasik. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second for Mr. Peer? Any discussion? All in favor? All are in favor? All, do we have any other motions?
No, sir.
Okay. If there are no other motions, then I will happily adjourn this meeting at 9:36 of the Huffman ISD Board of Trustees.
Great job here.